Meeting of the Burlington Planning Board for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. And I appreciate if everyone could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, free, and just. And roll call attendance, please.
Chairman Larue.
Here.
Member Clark Raymond. Member Covino.
Here.
Member Españo.
Present.
Member Gaffney. Member Rappaport.
Present.
Okay, this is Barbara. This, I want to make this announcement that the Town of Burlington will be holding the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty Planning Board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty.
Hello. So this meeting. Hello, is that Paul Raymond?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Do we have Joe and Pemba?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I didn't hear you say aye. This meeting will be held via Cisco, Cisco Webex. The link is available on the Planning Board website in the town calendar. It's town, townofburlingtonwebex.com. The meeting number is one seven three five five two three five one five, meeting password two thousand and twenty. If you need to join by phone, it's six one seven three one five zero seven zero four. The meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT Government Channel ninety-nine, RCM fifteen, Verizon forty-one, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be made, able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public, public comment when the Chair will announce. Questions can be asked via Webex phone, Facebook Live, Webex chat, and an email at planningatburlington.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, you can call Planning Staff at seven eight one two seven oh one six four five or email us at planningatburlington.org. All votes will be taken by a roll call vote.
Thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara once again. The first thing on our agenda is citizens' time. If there is someone here who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. All right, seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
So this is Liz.
Announcement. So Liz, I just wanted, the very first thing, I want to table and let Melissa give us the announcement when she's up.
Excellent. Okay, fantastic.
Otherwise, move on. I just want to make sure I give that to her.
Okay, great tease, Kristin. Keep them, keep them, hang on. All right. No, it's good. So the first announcement is that we have a new inspector building. So ahead of the Building Department, Mr. Mark Dupell is going to be joining us. He will start with the town on November twenty-third. And once he kind of settles in, we're going to invite him to a Planning Board meeting so that you guys all can meet him. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee is going to meet November eighteenth at six o'clock PM via. This is old.
That was yesterday.
I'm sure it was amazing. The Transportation Committee is going to meet November twenty-third at seven o'clock via Webex. I can't believe it, but Thanksgiving is happening next week, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. All town offices will close. And on the twenty-fifth, we close at three o'clock PM in Town Hall. And on December third, look forward to, for our Planning Board meeting. It's going to be a joint meeting of Planning Board, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and Plan Use Committee so that we can talk about the housekeeping zoning amendment. So that's just kind of cleaning, doing a kind of quick cleanup of the zoning bylaw to make sure everything is smooth in there. And I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you, next.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Yeah. Did we, did we do the Pledge of Allegiance?
We did, Paul. I think maybe you joined after that.
Okay, I missed after. Thank you, sorry.
Sure. Ernie, did you have something to add?
Yes, I had a couple of announcements that the Planning Board members might be interested in. The Housing Partnership Committee is going to meet next Tuesday, November twenty-fourth at six PM. And that's via Webex also. Excuse me. And the signed bylaw subcommittee, a subcommittee of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee will be meeting Monday, December seventh. Oh, that's after our meeting, okay. At, at five thirty, where, where we're discussing signs in the town center. So I think some people might be interested in that too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. This is Barbara again. We do not have any legal notices or nonapproval. So we're moving on to administrative matters, which is item six on our agenda. Item six A is Stormwater General Bylaw Update. Is Conservation Staff here to update us?
Yes, I am, I'm Coleman. Sorry, I was waiting for an introduction. Sorry.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Eileen Coleman. I'm the Assistant Conservation Administrator. And what we would like to discuss is updates to the Stormwater Bylaw. I just want to take a moment and step back just to give Planning Board members, who aren't all aware of this, an idea of where the bylaw came from. So the Clean Water Act prohibits anybody from discharging pollutants through a point source into waters of the US unless they've received a permit through the National Pollution Elimination Discharge System. That's the NPTZ program. The NPTZ Stormwater Program regulates stormwater discharges from municipal separate storm sewer systems, that's MS fours, and also from industrial activities and construction activities. So there's three different types of permits. So stormwater in Burlington is regulated through our MS four permit. So one of the requirements of the previous two thousand and three permit was to develop and adopt a bylaw to address post-construction stormwater runoff from new development and redevelopment. And Arlington adopted that bylaw in two thousand and six. So the MS four permit was updated, and the new version went into effect in two thousand and eighteen. And the current MS four permit requires us to modify the stormwater bylaw by June of two thousand and twenty-one to contain provisions that are at least as stringent as those listed in the permit. These required changes extend to design of stormwater management on new developments and redevelopments, including defining exempt projects and requiring low-impact development strategies to be implemented unless infeasible. We are proposing no changes to the review or permitting process other than reducing the number of paper copies that are submitted. So if you wish, I could go through the changes in detail, or otherwise, I'm happy to take any questions that your board may have.
Thank you, Eileen. This is Barbara again. I, I don't know if it's necessary for us to go through. We have a copy on our own, so everyone's had a chance to read it. But I will give the board members a chance to ask questions if they have any. But first, does our staff have any questions or comments they want to make?
Thank you, Barbara. So we've been working with the Conservation Commission as well as the Stormwater Committee, which includes a Board of Health and the Engineering Department and others. Eileen can correct me, but a group of us working together on the bylaw. And we feel very comfortable with the, the upgrades and updates, especially with the LED functions. And we're continuing to work on updates. This is, I think, the beginning of updates in general, just to kind of stormwater and other, stormwater, how we're dealing with stormwater. But overall, this doesn't change the way in which the Planning Board and Conservation Commission are working together in permitting stormwater design.
Okay, thank you. Board members, I'll just run quickly through the list, and you can let me know if you have questions. Joe and Pemba?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Paul Raymond?
No, all set.
Ernie Covino?
All set, thanks.
Micah Spao?
All set, thank you.
Bill Gaffney?
Yeah, just a quick question. You mentioned in, was it two thousand and five, was it the initial, the initial bylaws approved by Arlington?
Did I say Arlington? Sorry, I live in Arlington.
Oh, okay, because I was confused in how that was relating to what we did.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and then this is just an update to that. Got it? Okay, thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Bill. Brenda Rappaport?
I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eileen, for coming in and updating us. Thank you. So next, we are going to have a chat with our new Economic Development, well, she's not new anymore, but Economic Development Director, Melissa Tentaklis. Is she here?
Barbara, can I pause just for a quick second? And I just want to ask Eileen. Eileen and John, are you looking for any type of letter of support or anything to go to town meeting with your bylaw change from the Planning Board?
I think that would be welcome, if, if you could do that.
Okay, so I just, if everyone's comfortable with that, we'll draft something to support.
That'd be great. So you'll draft that, send it out to us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Kristin.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we, we would like to welcome Melissa Tentaklis, our new Economic Development Director. Is Melissa here? Oh, there she is. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, hi, Madam Chair. Hi, Planning Board.
I understand you have some news for us.
Generally, yeah, I coordinated with Kristin primarily. Number one, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, again, my name is Melissa Tentaklis. I work as the Economic Development Director. And I coordinated with Kristin to pretty much just try to, you know, keep communication open in terms of this new office and kind of give an update on things that are going on in the Economic Development Office and how we're coordinating with Planning Staff over the last few months. So part of it will be a kind of a general update. And then I'd like to really, if it's, you know, time permits, and depending, many chair, if you'd like to open it up to any questions or concerns or even really thoughts that the Planning Board may have on the topic of economic development. So with that, I think, you know, first and foremost, what's on people's minds has been obviously the pandemic and how it's affecting the business community. And overall, I feel like we've had, fortunately, limited number of permanent closures in the town. We're kind of trying to assess that now. A few of them had been struggling beforehand. So we are in the process of working at the Board of Health, planning in the Town Clerk's Office to try to get a better grasp of which ones have really permanently closed. But with that, we've been working with our kind of regional reps and at the state level to coordinate the funding from the CARES Act. And I think you've probably seen emails from me. We did have two particular programs that we were able to fund. One was a micro-business or a micro-enterprise grant program. And then the other was, is, I should say, is what we're branding kind of called the B2 Life Training Program. The first one is still an ongoing grant process. To date, we've had eight micro businesses that have secured approximately ten thousand dollars each to sustain themselves for the next few months going forward. And we're continuing with that. The state has additional funds as well. They're contributing to support micro businesses. And the second program is, you know, what I like to think of as a more comprehensive approach to economic development is really looking at our workforce and trying to understand those underlying elements of change with shifts in hospitality and retail being the most, I would say, difficult in terms of unemployment numbers and challenges as openings kind of, there's openings and there's going to be shutdowns and people changing their behaviors. So what we've done is really look at where there is growth, and that is in our life science and our healthcare. So we were able to use the CARES Act funding to create a pilot program for training. And we've become really good partners with Mass Hire. It's a Northwest Metro Mass Hire Division. And as of this week, actually, if you're a Burlington or Bedford resident and you meet certain income requirements, you will be eligible for essentially free training in life science or healthcare field. And I think that not only strengthens kind of the talent pool, it may opens up opportunity for longer-term growth for an individual as well as what I'd like to think about, you know, more connectivity to the existing job nodes that are here. You know, the industries that are in our town and our region. So those two things are opening, well, I guess those are two initiatives that have been directly related to COVID. On top of that, just in terms of kind of relations with Planning Board and Select Board, we've kind of developed an, I think, I call it informal, but it's formal because you guys have appointed both Micah Spao, Brenda Rappaport as our Economic Development Liaisons, as well as Mike Runyon and Nick Priest from the Select Board. And we have met regu, pretty, well, we started to meet as of two months ago. Ideas to meet once, once a month. And that's with Kristin, Paul, and myself. And we're still kind of getting established on, you know, what our work plan will be. They have really been kind of our sounding board for our, our initiatives around planning and economic development. So if you, I don't know, Madam Chair, if I can ask Micah Spao, if there's regular updates at the Planning Board. But I mean, I think that's one thing we're trying to encourage both boards to just offer up is just, you know, what we're doing there. In addition to that, we have a few grants that, you know, we have made some progress on that I'm kind of excited about. One, just we got word today, actually, we're excited about that. That is through the MAPC. It's our Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And that's to give us some initial funding to do some visioning work and community engagement around what we want to see down the mall road corridor. Not just the mall site in particular, but really look at, you know, take our cues from the comprehensive plan. And, you know, based in our discussions that we've had with Planning Staff as well as in the Selectman's Office, the idea of like, we're, we've talked about like, smart growth and what that means for, you know, density and building up our existing commercial. You know, really enhancing existing commercial, not trying to do transformative development in, in any of the residential areas, but looking at what we have and how we can enhance that. So we had that announcement from MAPC that was for twenty-five thousand dollars for that initiative. And then big news that's kind of coming out, and I know the Select Board, I talked to Paul, he said it's okay to tell everyone now. But we did get a large, significant grant for the water infrastructure. And I don't know how much, you know, Kristin has been, you know, able to kind of give you updates on this one because it's a little bit tangential, but it really is kind of the underpinnings of any additional growth that we're looking at into the future and even our existing users. But it's our water supply. So we've talked about and you've heard at town meeting that there's been investments in, you know, expanding and connecting to the MWRA to supplement our town water supply. And so we've broken it up into two phases. And, you know, I think John Sanchez, I have a phone ringing in the background, sorry. John Sanchez, our Director of DPW, has been a rock star, really, in putting this together, laying out the plan, and then working with the Chamber of Commerce to really kind of mobilize and help the business community articulate what that means for them on top of the practical kind of, you know, utility infrastructure that John provided. And it blended, and we put together a grant to Mass Works. And that was for, we got that awarded and announced today for three point five million dollars. So that was a huge, huge benefit to the town. And I think a lot of people are excited about that one. So those are kind of the two big ones. And let me, let me just pause there. I feel like I kind of start to run on. Are there any questions with those things?
You're not running off. First of all, I want to congratulate you because those are, those are really important initiatives. And it sounds like you're doing great work, and we really appreciate it. So I, I'm going to ask the board members if they have questions. But I actually have a question for you regarding the Mass Hire Grant. I'm wondering how the town is promoting that so that people know that it's available to them.
That is a good question because we, it's just, it's just really me. So I, I laugh a little bit because it is a little more challenging to get the word out sometimes. Just today, we worked with the News Director at BCAT, and we filmed a short kind of PSA. And we have developed a flyer. I think Mass Hire has been really instrumental in that what they're doing is they have a group of folks that they've served both in Burlington and Bedford. So they've reached out to those people that they've already worked with, who, you know, are residents. And then the plan is to work with Marge and some of the social services, Council on Aging, and then our Social Service Department to kind of help get the word out. I've also worked with DECA, which is the kind of business club at the high school. And they have been really great as well in terms of, I, I just kind of, because there's no age limit. So if you're a high school student and you're interested in exploring some classes at the community college, you, and you're income qualified, that would be fine. So we're excited about that, and hopefully it can be a model for the region.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. It's, they both sound like very exciting initiatives. So again, thank you and congratulations. Are there any other board members that have questions for Melissa? Please just identify yourself.
Barbara, this is Paul.
Okay, Paul Raymond, you're up first.
Yes. What I want to know is when I, I saw recently, and I was going to send it, I didn't know who to send it to, but I read the newspaper every day. I'm a reader. And there was recently an announcement by Waltham of a major biotech that's coming into Waltham. And so, and, and we kind of are a natural competitor with Waltham as far as, you know, businesses coming in and locating in our area. And I, is there a group within the state, for instance, who are also certainly interested in economic development? Who, people who want to develop go to these people. I know that the law firms like Bob Buckley, people come to them and say, this is what we want. And they help them with the search and so forth. So I think the, the, one of the important things initially is to let everybody know that has any part in that selection process that we're in business and, and that we have locations, that we're looking to serve them, we'll work with them and do whatever we can within reason to explain to them why they should be locating in Burlington. These are the things that you're doing, everything of the grants and so forth are great to help us position ourselves. But it should be the primary function of, of your position is to do something that we didn't do before. I mean, people came to the Planning Board, but we really didn't have anybody looking specifically to find whatever, whether it's biotech or anything else. And I would urge you to, where we haven't done that before, go to work in finding out where people go. Because we do know, for instance, that, that people have, that are searching have looked at the landlocked parcel. They don't realize that that's, you know, not available. And that's the first thing they look for. They, they look for facilities for water, sewer, and location, and that's perfect and why that's, that's what they're looking at. But thank you. That's my comment to start.
Thank you, Paul. There was another member, I wasn't quite sure who it was that wanted to ask a question.
Ernie, Barbara?
Ernie, go ahead, please.
Question from Melissa, and that is, you talked about micro grants and micro-business grants. Can you tell me how small a business has to be in order to be, be available to get one of those?
Yeah, the, the micro-enterprise definition was five or fewer with one of those five people being the owner. I think, you know, we said there was, I reported there was only eight that received the micro-enterprise grant. And that because there are some tough income eligibility requirements on those. And to be frank, that has been a common complaint across the board for every community who's participated in the program. Everyone was excited at first, but, you know, when you look at the, the details and the federal requirements for accessing the funds, there's a lot fewer micro businesses that would qualify.
Is, just to follow up, is the, the income, is it the income of the business? The gross sales of the business? Is that what they look at? Or do they actually look at the income of the own business owners?
They look at the tax file, for the initial round, they looked at the tax filings for the household.
Okay, so it's a small individually-held business that they're targeting. Okay. Okay, I follow. Thank you. I, I hadn't, I hadn't been aware of those before. And congratulations on, on doing a good job so far, and I'm sure you'll continue to. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ernie. Madam Chair, I just, it's possible just to maybe make a couple points to Paul's comments.
Please go ahead.
Yeah. Paul, I feel like, I think you have a really good point in terms of how are people communicating when they are looking for sites? And I just want to say, you know, from my experience, there are a few, you know, few, I would say, state agencies that people turn to initially. You know, Mass Bio, Mass Life Sciences, Mass Econ. And what we've done is, you know, established relationships with them. There's individual site-location specialists that we have not reached out to as much. But that's our kind of strategy with those people is building out a specific commercial website that, you know, we're in the process of developing that complements what New Warfield has done for the town site. But it's specifically focused for a commercial audience, a business audience. So we're trying to, you know, kind of do that to help facilitate those connections. And, you know, the last thing, it, it's kind of like, you know, my gent, my more gentle approach, instead of competition, it's cooperation. Like if we're looking at the region, you know, and we're working cooperatively on like how we grow together and what benefits are, I think it becomes a little bit more, I don't know, cooperative-oriented. So I, I like, I like to think of it like that a little bit, too.
May I come in on the Madam Chair?
Of course. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, no, I was, one of the things while you were speaking, I, I would develop a brochure, if you will, because we already have some very creative people that I was in that field. And I'm having a hard time understanding what they're doing. But they're the really cutting-edge people. And if we had some kind of brochure that said, you know, this is what we have. We have water, we have sewer, we location, we have an attitude that we want you to come in here. And these are the kind of people that we already have and are, and are intent on developing a biotech presence, if you will, as we do in, in other fields where people know Burlington for all the engineering firms and so forth. And I would have something like that so, so that, you know, if, if there's any questions, you, you know, hand them this and say, you know, to start with, you know, look at this and see what we have to present, which is a lot. And, and just as part of. And and just as part of, you know, reaching out, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yes, is that Joe? Go ahead, Joe.
Mind if I make, yeah, just a comment and then a question. So Melissa, I want to, the comment is I want to thank you. It sounds like you've done some phenomenal work in there and some really good things have happened as a result of it. The question I have is, is there any type of initiative, you know, throughout the state? And I'd have to say municipality by municipality. You probably have organizations that you deal with within the economic development community. Has there any been any type of initiative to sort of take the the emergency development issues and economic issues, you know, move forward on trying to get those resolved by somehow, you know, maybe with these organizations, having the municipalities send messages, you know? If you have enough, a flood of messages going into our national, you know, our our federal legislators, basically telling them to get off their behinds and 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 get some sort of a COVID relief package going, or else we're going to be losing all these small mom and pop businesses, which are really the type of thing we want to develop. They all say how much they hate the big economic, you know, the big, you know, the big conglomerates and the monopolies. And they want they want small businesses, but yet, you know, nobody's moving to give them the relief that they need when, you know, they're having a hard enough time as it is. And not sure if a lot of these people are going to be able to survive it through the winter. So in from an economic development perspective, I mean, this is more of an emergency or a triage kind of a, you know, move. I know, you know, you're putting programs in that develop the economy over the years and try to develop the business community over the years. But, you know, what are they doing for the immediate? Because if, you know, if half of these places go out of business, we're, you know, we're basically starting from scratch again instead of trying to, you know, get these legislators to keep the existing businesses going and and then develop from there.
It's a good question. I think you, the American Planning Association and that economic development have advocacy groups. I have not actually heard the state kind of move for that. I mean, I know, you know, the big, the big numbers are really, we're down 10 million jobs across the nation and people are really pushing for that. Immediately, though, you know, I we I haven't been and I'm not aware of advocacy push on the front as I know of it now.
Oh, is it? Yeah, so I'm not sure if you lost. Did we lose the mic or you all set? My, so I guess my question would be, is there, you know, is it the wrong? And we, am I talking, you know, talking to the wrong person? Or or enter the as far as trying to establish some sort of an initiative? And it's, you know, Burlington can do it, but I, you know, Burlington telling our 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 US senators and and US reps is, you know, it's all well and good. But if everybody in the in the state comes together and tells them they need to get moving to get a, you know, COVID relief package going, you know, and and I would think it's economic development that would be doing that type of thing. You know, and maybe it would have to be statewide. Maybe there's associations that really can reach out to every community in the in the state and say, look, we need to, do we take a vote? And then we all send the message strong and, you know, strong and clear to our legislators to get moving instead of going on, you know, Thanksgiving break and 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 when there are people out there that can't pay their, you know, literally can't keep their staffs going and and keep their businesses going. You know, so I guess, you know, what I'm saying is if there isn't, is there somehow at this, in that department or that within that environment or that association, you know, that this can be initiated? Because I'm not sure really, and you know, maybe it's, maybe you're the wrong person. But if it's not at the economic development level, where would it be to put something like that together, right? Because, you know, economic development is statewide and each individual town should have their own development people that are working with ones in other departments, you know, within other towns and things like that. But
Well, I I mean, just in short, I think. Right, Joe. I think what we can do is just two parts. I think we'll look into what advocacy, some of the groups that I am aware of have been doing. And I think I'll report back. There's a, there's a couple of groups, but I haven't personally heard a kind of a group movement on that front. But I can look into it and then report back to Kristen and Barbara, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else on the board that wanted to ask Melissa a question?
I do, Madam Chair. It's Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll keep it quick. I know we're running a little long here, but thank you, Melissa, for joining us tonight. Just to add on what Paul said, maybe we could add some of that stuff to the website as opposed to handing off a pamphlet. Well, my question is something I'm concerned about. With the pandemic, the the cycle of business or the, I don't know, the way business is done, I think is is changing and will change. Are you seeing anything in your office that maybe it might be a little too early to tell for upcoming potential vacancies for companies maybe thinking to downsizing because they're finding that working from home works for them? And we have anything in place to kind of vanguard or protect ourselves for potential vacancies in office buildings with companies probably shutting off that overhead, you know, when they learn that, you know, hey, we can have X percent of our workforce work from home because it worked during the pandemic? Just something to think about with potential, you know, openings and, you know, vacancies in town for office space.
Yeah, I mean, the general trend is we're seeing maybe fewer people, but still more space. So there are sublets are up. We haven't seen kind of full kind of terminations to existing leases or anything. And that depends on your lease cycle. Sublets are up based on what I've heard from CBRE. So what we're seeing is some people still looking to move out to space. So the space is still desirable as much as you still don't might, we might not see it in certain, you know, kind of parking lots. It's still, the demand is still there. And, you know, most recently, I think we've been talking about, a lot of people are looking at the supply and demand on life science and lab lab space. So there's going to be an interest most likely in, you know, office conversions to lab off it or R and D. So those are things that, you know, we want to, you know, maybe look at. I think we're poised for, you know, handling both. So the, but, you know, that's really kind of fluctuating as we're all seeing.
And lastly, while you're here, do you want to mention what Tuesday, the breakfast on Tuesday to the gang while you're here?
Yes. So Mike Spahoe, you're our official representative now, right? Through the, is it through the?
No, no, no. What, no, we're doing Tuesday, the meeting, the chat. Not that.
I was, I was thinking, I was thinking of this past Tuesday's meeting, but the upcoming meeting.
Yes.
The upcoming meeting. Okay, so the upcoming meeting. On Tuesday, yes, I would love to tell everyone about that. We are trying something also a little new. It's called a community chat and the topic is economic development. It's rather informal. We've invited Paul Sagorino, Kristin Kazner, and obviously our economic development liaisons to be part of a discussion. And the idea is to invite residents to bring their questions, comments to an hour-long discussion and to have essentially what, you know, Paul and I've been talking about is like a fireside chat. You know, depending on how many people come, we'll try to, you know, gauge that. But it's on the public calendar. It's for the 24th on Tuesday at 9:00 AM. And we are, it's a, you know, it's their first time. So we're trying to see if this time slot works and if the format works. So I encourage, you know, the whole planning board and anyone out there who is listening to this, you're invited to come and bring your questions. Because I know, you know, personally, I've gotten some really interesting questions over the last few weeks from COVID to budgets. And it would be nice to have, you know, a venue to share, share those answers and share the thoughts behind that.
Is this on the web or at a location?
It's a virtual meeting, so it's still online.
Okay, thank you.
Will it be on BCAT as well?
We won't be tape, yes, we will be taping or recording it.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that wanted to ask Melissa a question?
So I just wanted, oh, go ahead, but I just want to say something in closing before I move on.
Yeah, just just real quick. Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, just real quick. I know we haven't, we haven't been introduced, but, you know, we had a town center, subcommittee of the planning board to kind of look at when applicants came in from design issues. With with your past experience with another town, how did, how did you see that being implemented with regard to design review? And maybe in the same context, if there were things that that were, that were, say, not meeting the design review or you have illegal signage and things like that? How did your, your experience, how was that addressed in the town that you used to work for before? Because it seemed to be effective. We're here, we're just, we're ineffective in that.
So, you know, in my experience, we've had the, it was a historic district commission. So it was a different kind of regulatory system like that was overseeing the design. Here in town, you know, in Burlington, I think what, you know, the focus has been from my, you know, from my vantage point and for my kind of, I would say, work plan has been kind of strengthening the existing businesses, giving COVID over design elements. That said, I've been part of the sign, the sign bylaw committee and been talking to Sally as well, Carrie, on, you know, the work that they've done to date. And in fact, I think it's the first Monday in December, I will be part of that committee to give an update on some of the work that we're trying to do for placemaking in the town center, which is a little lighter, not as heavy into the policy. But it's still all intertwined to make sure that, you know, the town center is a thriving place.
And and how, in your, in your experience, how, when you went to a successful town previously, how did they enforce the those type of design issues or other type of, you know, signs that weren't supposed to be there? We did, was it, is there some sort of trick to it or magic to it that we just haven't figured out yet? Or what was, what's the best, I always look for best in class. How did the best in class do it? And we, I think our next door neighbors were pretty good at it.
Um, I think depending on who you're talking to in Lexington, it's been, you know, tricky to find the best practice. You know, whether you're a business trying to get exposure or whether you're, you know, coming from a certain, you know, design aesthetic as a resident, it's a, it's a fine balance. So I think that the, you know, I know the sign committee's been working on talking to some general sign kind of experts who not only do the policy, but that do actually, you know, fabrication. So I think looking at scale and trying to allow some creativity because that's, you know, just like people wear clothes and it's expressed in different ways and people wear different things. You know, that allowance allows for some uniqueness of each individual business to be kind of shared. And that gives, you know, that gives variety to our community.
Okay, and just to, just maybe finish it up on the piece of enforcement of that. How magically did Lexington do that where we?
Yes, it was by, you know, complaint. And so our zoning enforcement officer had to enforce that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I think almost everyone has asked a question except maybe Brenda. Brenda, did you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair, I've spent quite a bit of time with Melissa and I welcome her to the community and congratulate her and appreciate everything that she has done. And and thank you very much.
And thank you very much, Melissa, for coming tonight and for all the hard work that you're doing.
Well, thank you, Brenda. I just wanted to say really quickly that all of you and Melissa, I mean, today is a monumentous historic day. I mean, there's not every day you get three and a half million dollars and another 25,000 on the same day. And I called Melissa at 4:30 on the MAPC and I was like, oh, my gosh, like, I can't believe this is all happening in one day. And I think, you know, it's because of a lot of work we've done building up to this point. And I think we've been a good team, but I really think in the past year since Melissa's been with us, it's just really made a good team, a really great team. And we've been communicating a lot better and coordinating between the boards and businesses and and just bringing in an angle that, you know, I know we've talked about economic development and there's just things that Melissa brings to us that we really haven't been doing in the past and adds adds what we really needed to really fulfill that picture and become what we are now and hopefully even grow to in the future. So I just want to, you know, we can hold a parade for what we accomplished today. So I just want to make sure that, I don't know, you start, Melissa started talking, I was like, ah, the big news, the big news. Wonderful. So, but again, it's, you know, because of a lot of the work that you guys, the planning board has done, Selakman have done, town meeting is approved, you know, so, you know, I think Melissa can bring us to this.
Socially distanced.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on to item six, I think it's six A or maybe it's seven A. Hold on one second. Item, yes, a matter of appointment. So item seven A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 108 Mahler Road. Edward and Elena Yivitskaya are the applicants. We're going to be handling this a little bit differently than we normally handle things because we have had a number of meetings about this. And we're at the stage now where we, the board members, need to give some direction to our staff. So my plan for this discussion tonight is for us to do exactly that and to not take any testimony from neighbors or applicants or anyone else unless someone has new information that they need to present tonight. So that's the plan. We need to give staff some direction about where we're leaning about this particular change, this application before us, so that they can then go back and formulate the correct decision for us. So that's the plan. If there is anyone in the listening audience that has new information that we have not heard before, that they want to present before we move on to that stage, I would ask you to speak up now. Okay, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to just briefly remind everyone, the board members, what we're talking about. We're talking about about this amendment to the plans. We're talking just about amend, the amendment in terms of moving the driveway. And we've all discussed a lot of the other things that surround that. But we're only talking about that change, not the entire subdivision development. So with that said, I'd like each of us in the board to make a brief statement as to how they're leaning and give staff some indication as to why they are leaning in that direction so that staff can formulate a good decision for us for the next meeting. So I'm going to start with Joe. Joe and Pemba?
Can I also just ask, just also just identify if you have enough information, if there is any other additional information that you need in order to think about?
Yes. Too. Thank you. So, Joe, you're up.
Yeah, so I I can't help but, you know, I have to listen to all sides of this. I can't help but still have this question in my mind as to why. You know, I can't help but think, you know, we've been told by the attorneys that we can only kind of deliberate on the change itself and really can't reflect back on the actual granting of this in the past. Even though, you know, we have a whole different set of circumstances here. So I can't get past that point of it. And, you know, so it's, in my mind, I keep, I keep replaying the fact that, you know, we have, you know, would we have, you know, had we had all of this information when we made that original decision, would we have approved it? And I'm not, I'm quite, quite sure that I would not have voted in favor of it. You know, so I can't help but keep playing that in my mind. I know I'm I'm hearing, you know, applicants and applicant, applicants are telling. I know I'm, I'm hearing, you know, applicants and applicant, applicants, attorneys, and, you know, telling me that we're not, we're not supposed to be going back to the original application. We can only be voting on the, you know, on this, but I, you know, in my mind, I can't get that, pass that piece of it. So, you know, I guess that would tell you which way I'm leaning on it. I feel like if we had to vote over on this, if we had this vote all over again, given the light of the new information that we have on this, I for one would not vote in favor of it. So I kind of, that's where I, I'm, that's the side that I'm kind of coming down on at this point.
So am I to, I'm not sure how to interpret what you've said, Joe, as to whether or not you would vote in favor of this change.
Well, I haven't, I, again, I keep going back to the fact that they're telling us we can only, we can only consider this change. And I, I'm not fully convinced that that's all we can consider here, because if this, in light of all of this new information, or the information that's before us now, you know, about where this roadway is going to be going, and maybe potentially the water issues it's going to be causing and things like that, I don't think I would have voted in favor of it to begin with. So I guess, does that make it any more clear for you? I, I'm not, you know, short of coming out and saying which way I'm voting on it. I think that pretty much tells the story. I, I, I am not convinced that, you know, with the introduction of all this new information, that we can't reconsider the initial vote, or our original vote. You know, and if I were to reconsider that, I would vote against it at this point in time. So I guess that's, is that not, is that clearer, or it's not, still not?
Well, it's very clear to me, and, and I will, you know, tell you that I think there are multiple board members that would agree with you on that. But what we're being told by our town council is that we have to make a decision on this change, the shifting of the driveway. And that is what, that is what our staff needs direction on. Are we going to approve this, or are we not going to approve this?
When I point blank ask our council that question, and I put it, and I, and I worded it in that fashion, you know, that had we been given all of the information that we're now having to deliberate on, I would, I wouldn't have voted in favor of it. So I guess maybe what I'm thinking is this, that's not a change. That's not a minor change. That's, you know, that's, you know, basically the reapplication. You know, I mean, a minor change would be a minor change, that if, you know, it's really not going to affect anything differently. Well, I think there's a lot of different things that are affected by the relocation of this, of this.
Okay, yeah, it's not a minor engineering change that's before us, though. It's an amendment to a subdivision plan, okay.
I get it, but an amendment is like, it's like a minor change. It's an amendment, right? I mean, it's not, it's not the initial, it's not the initial application. So I, I can't help but go back and say, well, if I was given this information at the point of initial application. So, you know, I, I understand what they're saying, is nobody would come forward for a minor change. But on the other hand, if they didn't think they were going to get this, they would bring the other one and then try to go after, you know, go and make the change afterwards and say, well, you can't vote against it now. You know, it's, in other words, they, they can use their own logic. They're saying that logic would be that, you know, nobody would go forward for a change if they thought it would reopen everything. Well, so why don't, so, so why don't you take the strategy, well, let's take, you know, let's put the application in, let's go for the easy one that we're going to get, and then we'll go back and try to do it afterwards and tell them they can't, they can't readdress it. You know what I mean? If, you know, I mean, I guess their, their argument can be used against them as well. You know, their argument that says, you know.
I hear what you're saying.
You can't, you know, so, I mean, I guess that's, that's my full thought on it, so I'm not, you know.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Paul Raymond, your input, please.
Am I ready to go?
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, okay, no, as you know, when this first came up, I indicated that I, I was opposed to it. One of the things, during the presentation, you're gonna, you're in an area where there's a question of wetlands and so forth, and when you change this, the engineers can say, well, it doesn't affect this, that, and something else. But we know that in many times we've been assured of something, and when the shovels got out of the ground and everything was completed, it ended up being something that we said, if I had known that, I wouldn't have voted for it. So I'm opposed to it. The other thing is, a number of the neighbors are also opposed to it, and because they think it's going to affect them. And since I've come on the board, if there's an issue between the neighbors and some, some other condition, I go with the neighbors, and I'm going with the neighbors on this one. So I'm opposed to it.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Next up, Ernie Covino, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. First, I have a, a question for staff, just to make sure that I understand the situation correctly. This is, this is the subdivision that was originally, when it first came before us, was going to come in from Muller Road itself. And that seemed, that was a very long, that was going to be a very long driveway, I guess you'd call it. And it created some, it was, because it was so narrow and create, and long, I guess it created some reservations. So the applicant went out and decided to use an easement, which they believe they can use. And I, I don't know, I mean, okay, so they, they went out and decided to use an easement that they had coming in from the other side. Am I correct? And we approved it, initially, finally approved it with the egress and access from Eugene Road, correct?
The original decision, I'm sorry, the original application was from Muller, down a very long, narrow road, which we had a lot of discussion about. There exists an easement out to Cormier over 26 and 30 that had been discussed, and they chose to access instead from Muller, because of the concerns raised, to Cormier through that easement. And the board approved that change. And the driveway location was split between those two properties, between those two easement lines, and this application seeks to shift that driveway location.
So I, I guess what I'm being asked is, would I approve the shifting of the access or driveway within the easement? I guess it's about 15 feet, which actually moves it a little bit further away from the pond. And there are still some, there are still going, there is still going to be a review by conservation, which basically deals with how it affects the waterways and the wetlands and whatever. Because, because I'm, I've, we've been advised by town council that that's what we're dealing with, the shifting of the, the access road within the easement 15 feet, and it's shifting away from the, from the pond. I think that I would look at it, if I looked at it objectively, and, and there are always parties that are not going to be happy with the decision, or most of the time. I think I would vote to approve, yes.
Thank you, Ernie. Okay, so then moving on, member Mike Espo. Would you like to weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this one has been bothering me for a while, through all the hearings we've been through. And I kept wondering why I would vote to approve it after everything we've heard. And I just went back and been thinking about a lot of it, and looked and checked with staff, and the initial approval was May 16th of last year. So while this whole hearing was familiar to me, I wasn't allowed to vote because I was a new member and I had missed the, some previous hearings. So I've never voted to approve the driveway through Cormier. And my worry was exacerbated when I actually went to the site. And if any of the members have not actually gone and walked and seen this driveway and the damage it'll do to the Russells and Mr. Verrata's property at 26 and 30 Cormier, I'm not in favor of making a driveway, one driveway to ruin two. So as it sits now, I'm going to abstain on this, because I never voted to approve it. I'm not in favor of going through Cormier. And I feel terrible that it's going to happen, because it, it shouldn't. But again, I don't know how I would have voted if I was, if I had a vote on May 16th. I'd like to think that I would have voted no. It was 6-0, I don't know, so I'm still not, so. I know that we're just voting on whether to approve the movement, it's not going to overturn anything, but I can in good conscience vote either way, because I never voted to approve it to begin with.
I understand, thank you, Mike. Bill Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So like Mike, I went to the property a while ago, a couple of times anyway. And you, you can see a big difference in elevation, that's what I looked at with the data that's been presented to us, with a fairly flat elevation and the one that was approved versus a fairly substantial elevation difference with the, with the roadway going and basically cutting into the hill. I think we heard from folks last time and the time before that, there's not going to be any, you know, wall that's going along there, so you're going to have naturally over time erosion for a two-foot cut into the roadway right on the hill there, which I think that, and the water coming down there, I think is going to be more detrimental than the existing one that's approved. So again, I'm not comfortable with this whole, which way you're leaning, because normally we have choices of what the motion will be. So again, like Joe, I, I'm, I'm just telling you where I, I think that is, but I'm not comfortable saying which way I'm leaning to vote at this time until we're, we have a motion in hand.
I understand, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Rappaport.
So I'm, I'm quite familiar with this property. I, I knew the former owner of 108 Muller, as well as the, the former owner of Cormier. And, you know, they, they were related. So, you know, using that cut through, that easement wasn't a big deal, because it was all family, and, you know, they rode dirt bikes and, but I know this, I know that area. While I did not, you know, I wasn't on the board in, at the original time of decision, I don't know that it would have approved this subdivision at all, knowing the topography, knowing the history of the land, knowing, you know, kind of the positive and, and negative aspects. I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision as well. I think there's, there's a lot of things to weigh out. And it's very disheartening to hear that the neighborhood is, is very, is not interested in moving forward with, with this subdivision or, or changing, changing the direction of the driveway. So I think, I think again, you know, marrying what some of the other members have said, I think we really need to take a step back and talk to staff and, and make a decision at a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. This is Barbara, and I'm, I feel very much like most of my fellow board members do. This has been a very, very difficult situation, and there's really no answer that's going to please everyone. But if I try to look at just this particular amendment, I share the same concerns that Bill Gaffney shares, that the shifting of the driveway could actually worsen the situation as opposed to the original location of the driveway. And for that reason, I, I have deep concerns about it, and I'm trying to focus just on that change. But I don't think, I don't think, it's not clear to me that that change, this amendment, does no harm, and that's where I'm falling on this. So, um, so I'm trying to think if we've really given staff some direction here. And it's possible that, well, I don't know. Kristin, do you have what you need here, or do you need more information from the board? Hard to say. You know, right now, you're, you're kind of free, you know, there's six of you, if one's going to abstain, and you're, I mean, I, I think there's a, definitely a tilt that we're sensing from, from the direction of the comments.
Is this something we can clarify further offline?
Um, no, you really need to discuss any of this in public session, so.
All right, I think.
Hard to say where, where we are.
Madam Chair, if you need a more firm decision, I would not agree with moving the driveway, if that's helpful.
I think that that does make a difference, because I think you're hearing from me and Bill and Brenda now that we are, we have concerns about the shift of the driveway. I think you're hearing the same thing, actually, well, you're hearing different things from Joe and Paul, but a similar decision. Does that help at all, Kristin?
Um, yes, that, that is a little bit better in terms of, you know, I mean, it's just, the, the one thing that we're, we don't want to do is, is it's, you know, once we present you with decisions is kind of, want to try to get a sense that we're presenting you with the correct decision, so we can actually reach a decision instead of failed votes or non-decisions, or, you know, we want to make sure that whatever it is, we can try to outline what the reason and rationale for your decisions are. And many of you brought up the shifting in the grades and potential drainage that, at least what I heard just now through your comments, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Joe, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Um, to clarify mine, I, I think that's exactly what I'm saying. You know, given the, the new roadway, the, the new driveway, I, I just think it creates so many different problems that had we been posed with this one to begin with, I wouldn't have voted in favor of it. So it's, you know, I, I have a hard time with someone telling me that, you know, you can get an approval on one, and then we can change the circumstances. And even though it drastically changes potentially the effects on the surrounding neighbors and the surrounding area, we can't no longer consider that piece of it, well.
So this is Bill. Bill, maybe.
Yeah, no, no, and clarifying that very much helps us try to, you know, get to the points we need to make. So I appreciate this type of conversation.
So this is Bill, do we, you know, do ourselves a disservice by, you know, making things minor engineering changes versus, you know, changes to plans being made in general? Because I know we went through that a number of years ago, but something like this where maybe technically we're considered a minor engineering change, but if you, if you look at it, it's a fairly big deal. And then maybe not go into that minor engineering change, but may, of a, of a major site change. Is that something?
Well, this is an amendment to the subdivision, it's not a minor engineering change to the subdivision. So we have, it is, it does go to that level.
Thank you, Kristin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so although this was difficult, and I, I think we have given enough direction to staff for us to move forward. So at this point, I think we should continue this matter to the planning board meeting of December 3rd, 2020, unless someone has something else they need to add.
So moved by Paul Raymond.
Thank you, Paul.
Second, second by Brenda Rappaport.
Thank you, Brenda.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Spahal.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks, everyone. The next item on our agenda, well, we have several items, looking for a motion to take items seven E through seven J together for discussion purposes.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. I think we need to go.
Thank you, yes. Sorry, no, go on, draw a call. If you want me to summarize what they are, as I did the last meeting, I certainly can. If you want me to summarize what they are, as I did the last meeting, I certainly can, instead of reading them all.
Okay. Chairman Larue is, um, Vice Chairman Impama.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. If, if you could summarize, Kristin, that would be very helpful.
Sure. There's many. So this is a number of public, public hearing for a number of special permits that start with a special permit pursuant to section 4271 light manufacturing and processing plants prototype manufacturing, 300 Summit Drive, the Gutierrez Company. All of these will be 300 drive, the Gutierrez, 300 Summit Drive, Gutierrez Company. Also a special permit, section 42711, research and development. Special permit, section 4274, laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine and physics. Special permit, sections 42741, life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacture, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, subject to the regulations of the Board of Health. And Article 10, Section 10 5, which actually is part of our housekeeping amendment that we can talk about later, because, anyway. And also a special permit, section 42742, life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental, biomedical devices. Public hearing for special permit pursuant to 4329, parking garages and parking structures for more than three vehicles, including both enclosed and open garage structures. Special permit, section of 43215, storage and disposal of oils, fuels and petroleum product, products. Section 7 through 6, special permit for increasing the maximum parking space requirements for non-sysatic, non-residential and non-educational uses. And finally, an application for site plan, 300 Summit Drive, the Gutierrez Company, as all of them are the applicants.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara. Before we jump into this, I just wanted to let everyone know that I did watch the last meeting and sign the appropriate Mullen form, so I am able to participate in this discussion and vote. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, please go ahead.
For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I have with me this evening Scott Weiss from The Applicant and Will Park from SMMA, who's a site civil. I, I think the most efficient way of doing this would be to go through the issues that were raised at the last meeting to see what we've, what we've done to date and walk the board through some of our thoughts on those, get some additional feedbacks that we can fine tune if necessary, the plans, and then proceed. So I don't know, Scott, if you want to walk through those issues or Will?
Sure. I'd be happy to. And Will can share his screen for the, for the site plan. And just to check, can everybody hear me?
Yes, fine.
Great.
Everyone seeing my screen now?
Are you seeing the site plan now?
I see it.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So there were a couple of items or several items that were discussed last week. Go in the, I don't know, probably, I don't know what order this will actually be. There were some questions about some landscaping on the north side of the building. I think Member Gaffney raised, there is some landscaping proposed at the very northerly end. The building is set to be right up against the highway property line. And there's some green area outside of that, which is existing green on the plan. And I, I think, Will, you might have an aerial image, like a Google or Bing or something of that, you had to credit the right company here. A lot of that area is already green and grass and, and contains some, some growth in that area. And none of that would be disturbed from this. So that would all be maintained throughout, throughout this project. There's very limited area in the effort, not to overplay flipping back and forth, but if you put up the site plan again, the idea has always been to push the building as far north and east away from anything to the, to the south and west, the existing residences and, and all of that, to push it as far away. So in doing so, the idea is to beef up the landscaping on the, on the far side, but it does give the building obviously good visibility and presence to and from the highway ramps that are located there. I don't know if you want to go through or comment as we go, or we can just flip through the issues and then have any follow-up comments and questions if that's most, most effective and efficient.
I, I think that's probably best, Scott. Thank you.
Okay. There were also some questions about the parking and ability to integrate and reduce parking. The, the parking for this facility is actually planned, what we think is fairly low at just about three per thousand cars. And that's again, because it is a life science building, lab building, which will have that area within it, similar to the, to the Millipore building next door. What we would want to do for marketing purposes, and I think Bob talked about this at the last meeting, what we would want to do is have the ability to, to market this with the three per thousand available. But as a tenant and user comes forward, as we've done in the past, we did with Millipore, we did with Zurich, we've done with a number of different projects, we would hope to be able to come back to the board and, and really if a user doesn't need certain parking, we have no desire to build extra parking. So, so we would look to put a parking area in reserve. We did that at Millipore. There are 200 plus or minus parking spaces that are, remain unconstructed. And we would want to do something similar here if the opportunity presents itself. But from a marketing standpoint, the ability to be able to respond to a user's needs, because some of them, they just have very different needs and operations as, as they go forward. So we wouldn't want to lose a potential tenant and user of the building because we did not have sufficient parking or, or believe that we would have sufficient parking. And speed to market is going to be important. So we, we have that. I think the last item, which was, I'll hit on right now, is probably the biggest one, was the idea of a connection to the highway. And we do have, as, as some may remember, we did have an area reserved for this, for a future connection to, to the highway in the prior approvals. We would seek to include that as we go forward. A similar opportunity, I think Member Gaffney also pointed out that our emergency access drive, which connects just at the bottom of your view there, would connect down off of Summit Drive, does present the opportunity for an on-ramp to Route 3 North. As we said before, we are 100% in favor of this. We do have a restriction, a deed restriction that was placed on the sale of the land by the DOT that prevents us from connecting to the highway. So we would have to overcome that. But we would certainly be amenable to reserving the space. What we see as an emergency access drive frankly could become the ramp that goes on to Route 3 North. And we would reserve as, as a condition of approval, the, the area so that that connection could be, could be completed and installed. And then frankly, our emergency access drive would simply come off of that ramp, if you will, in the, in the future. So it actually, we're, we're almost constructing the initial portion of that, that ramp connection by doing this emergency access drive. It, it sort of tees it up even further to be able to be a future connection. So those were sort of the, the three items that we took away. I know Kristin raised the point about construction sequencing and certainly concern about how the project would go forward. We did address that in detail with a, with an outline of a, a construction sequencing with the Conservation Commission. They have completed their review. They have not issued their order of conditions or their decision yet. But they completed their review and agreed with the approach. And in general, the idea is certainly all of your erosion control requirements need to be put in place first. But in, in essence, in summary, before any of the existing drainage facilities can be removed from the site, the new detention basin and the pipe connections need to be put in place before anything can be disturbed. So it does create a certain amount of site preparation work that needs to occur before any building or parking can be, in, construction can begin. But that's a, a summary of that approach. So that's a quick summary of the items that were discussed. And certainly open to any questions or Kristin and Bob if I left anything out.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Staff, did you want to weigh in before I turn this over to the board for questions?
Sure. So as Scott mentioned, they did go through Board of Health and are almost complete with CONCOM. Just need to issue the decision at their next meeting. So some of the Board of Health questions, there's some historic environmental, it can, not really concerns, but just things that exist within this area that the Board of Health looked at. And we have comments to that end. And actually, Scott, I apologize if you just said it. But with this development, actually can, we can get at some of the concerns of and better, actually have a site that's better environmentally from, for the area than what actually exists right now. The sequencing with the Conservation Commission, if you remember in the original decision for the 400, 600, there's a drainage system that is in this area. And therefore just kind of concerned of, okay, well, if you're going to build this, what comes first? And as Scott mentioned, they need to fully construct the system that's going to handle the campus itself before they really get into construction on, on this building. So I think, you know, what we talked about a little bit with Scott and Bob this week was in terms of kind of construction sequencing and, you know, kind of getting the pad ready potentially before we have even a user to start building the building out, because there's substantial site work to be done to get the site ready. Also, the question about, you know, the campus and this kind of completes the campus. So in terms of the decision, we just need to, you know, button up 200, 300, or 200, 400, 600, and this new 300 building, just to kind of look at everything we've done campus-wide. If you recall, the mitigation that we had for the original building that was up here for 400, 600 was, you know, what was it, 2005? And it was, you know, widening of Wheeler Road. And what we actually did with help with Gutierrez, as well as Gutierrez's help with some Mass Works Grant and other activities around the area, we've, you know, put millions of dollars into Middlesex Turnpike in the intersection as a result of these developments. So that's, Gutierrez has really front-loaded quite a bit of the improvements. And I think we can all say that Middlesex Turnpike is a lot better for it, for, for all the work that's been done in this, in the corridor and especially this intersection. The other things we talked about were bike path connections and just kind of looking at different connections from Adams Street along Middlesex Turnpike through the corridor, through Northwest Park. As you know, that there's been some exploration as to what are the best ways we can connect bike paths. There's definitely willing, willingness from Gutierrez to create and map out those areas so we can have multimodal activities. Let's see. Those type of issues, you know, just also working with the fire department to make sure that the emergency access routes and kind of the permeability of the site works. But I think the access drive that they have around the building helps with that quite a bit. And then trying to work to kind of phase out the parking in terms of need as we approve this and work with them as, in terms of a user and getting that in. Nobody wants to build more parking than we need to build. That's, that's about it. I, I mean, I think there's just, you know, we need to structure that, the decision to get ready for you for the next meeting. Again, to tie everything together and kind of finalize the campus that we see up here.
And Madam Chair.
Support the, we support this, the proposal. We think that's, we think it's cited well for the site. It's not, it's as close as it can be to the existing campus with still having some independence, but not, you know, not facing the residents, not, you know, really facing inward toward the commercial areas.
And Madam Chair, if I may add one additional thing. I'm sorry. Is that okay?
Sorry, I was on mute. Please go ahead, Scott.
I, I just want to, I, I know there's a little bit loading on, on some of the stuff, but obviously a tremendous amount of work went into some of the towns rezoning and promoting life science. And I know Member Raymond mentioned promoting life science. And we recognize the competition with Waltham and other communities, both within the state and outside. And there is a, a huge, huge, tremendous benefit. We are, we are so happy and pleased to have the opportunity to work with Melissa Timpakas and, and everything that she's been able to do so far in her short time here is a tremendous, tremendous progress. And you guys really made a great, great choice. The MWRA Water Connection Upgrade Grant, whatever it's referred to as, is, is a, a huge help and support both for existing life science entities, but also in helping to attract new ones. So we, we recognize that, that benefit and are very supportive of, of the upgrade. And just to throw some support, obviously, to your, to the staff and the board for the foresight and all the work you guys have done to get us this far in, in helping to promote the industry. We, we have already gone, although we don't have tenants and people lined up, we have gone already from being a community that is ignored by the life science industry to a community that is recognized as having a major player and an up and coming opportunity for, for life science and lab opportunities. So we're, we're making great progress and we hope to be able to continue that with this project and.
So Scott, you're officially saying we're on the map?
We are, we are on the map. People are recognizing us.
On the map, big star.
Yep. It, it, it's, it's a big difference. We, we were fighting a very uphill battle just a couple of years ago where people would not, would not acknowledge Burlington as a legitimate opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Scott. News like that.
Madam Chair, can I just add that working with your staff over the last year with some of the members of the chamber to get a number of the initiatives? I know that people at home don't see how hard the staff works, both here and Melissa and across the, the town, behind the scenes. It's, it's so instrumental. And what I, I don't know if it was pointed out by Melissa earlier, that Burlington, of the 44 awards or the awards that were given out today, Burlington was number two in terms of dollar round. The only one that beat Burlington was the city of Chelsea. That's a real testament to that Burlington is being noticed at the state level and in the greater business community, particularly life size.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, for, for telling us that. I did not know we were number two. I think that's fantastic and, and I completely agree with you about our fantastic staff. So thank you for that. I'm going to turn this over to the boards.
I'm sorry?
What do you call it? It's number two?
In terms of dollar rounds, Joe.
I'm going to let him keep talking. Joe, do you have any questions for, for Scott or Bob?
No, I don't. Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Paul Raymond. Paul? Do you have any questions? Okay. I'm not hearing Paul's, so I'm going to come back to him. Ernie Covino, would you like to weigh in?
Uh, sure. Just a, a question or maybe two for Scott.
Sure, just a question or maybe two for Scott, if I could. And that is, Scott, you said you were you were looking for the three spaces per thousand, but you wouldn't build any more than you needed. So do I assume correctly that the building would you build the building before you have a tenant or not?
We we most likely not build this building without a tenant. We would. It's it's because a lead building becomes so specialized in terms of the layout in there. A lot of ladder spaces are similar, but it's very specialized in terms of the services and the location. So we would not intend to do that on spec. We we may do the site work as as Kristen was talking about to move the detention pond and network.
Right.
We would not start the building.
How about the garage? Would you build the garage before that? No, you wouldn't know either, is what you said, right?
We'll do it together.
If if you backed off the three spaces per thousand square feet, would you consider eliminating the on grade parking or some of the on grade parking? It would all be from the garage.
Yeah, so if we make the garage, you know, it might be able to be slightly smaller, you know, 50 spaces or so. But if we get much smaller than that, it becomes counterproductive for being too small of a surface for what you're spending to put it up. You know, you have to mobilize and get everything out there anyway. What we would most likely do first is, I think, Ernie, you may have mentioned this, is to not build the spaces that extend to the south beyond the end of the garage. That would probably be the first and easiest area to to reduce and carve that back. And then beyond that, we would probably be shortening the deck and the parking underneath together.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Mike Espo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to add, I'm fully in favor of the Raymond ramp. I didn't know what you guys were talking about. Always always thought that there was a big waste at the end of Route 3 to have that kind of end to nowhere. So I know it's an uphill climb. It sounds like there's a lot of hurdles, but anything we could do to to make that happen, we can even put Paul's picture on it, too. I'd love that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Bill Gaffney, do you have any questions or comments for Scott and Bob?
No, just thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I'm saying is you hear me hopping on the landscaping there out towards Route 3 North. And the reason why, if people that have been around here for a long time, like I have and mostly board members, you know, that that whole site was heavily forested. And when those buildings came in, it was clear cut. So you had a beautiful, you know, heavily landscaped, heavily forested area that now, you know, to keep the against one there to supplement that is what I'd be looking for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Brenda Rappaport.
No, I don't have anything to add, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so I actually, I don't have any concerns, but I share Bill's thoughts about landscaping. And I have we do we have a landscaping plan? Or are you going to submit a landscaping plan?
There is to tell this a little bit further when we get to building permit and construction level plans. And mostly, one of the things that we have become increasingly aware of is a lot of the watering bans as well and designing very water
drought resistant.
Yeah, water resistant, water tolerant or drought tolerant plants, plants throughout the site. So you end up with a little bit of a different landscaping approach. Our idea certainly around the building would be to have it very green. But as you get around the parking garage and and the other areas, it would be more of your meadow grasses that are allowed to grow taller and remain in place. You know, you would only mow them once or twice a year like that, so that you could reduce the need for watering in those in those areas.
I know that you can do some very, very attractive drought resistant landscaping, and I'm glad to hear that you're looking into that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this, but I I think it might be appropriate to put in our decision that you'll come back before us, not necessarily for the whole board, but perhaps just go to staff and and perhaps the chair to discuss more detailed landscaping plans when you have a tenant and you're further along in the process. Does the board, do board members feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
That's fine, Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Chair. Who will be chair by that point, because it probably won't be me. So okay, all right.
One thing just to add in there, just a note and maybe picked up on it in the last meeting, but right in front of the building at the entrance, we are proposing what's referred to as a bio retention area, which we're pretty excited about as well, because it offers the ability to have some greenery in there in a very natural state. And and right outside, it is also a low impact development, a better quality for stormwater. So it really helps harvest some of the collected green water in that area.
Okay.
Both treat it and green up the area.
Thank you. Okay. Trying to see if this is, but these are public hearings, so I want to ask and see if there's anyone in the listening audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question. Any neighbors or other interested parties? Okay, seeking no one. I think we're ready. Let's see. You're not voting on this tonight. Not sure what that strange noise is that I'm hearing, but Kristen, we're going to continue this matter?
Yes, we're continuing until we do not have a decision for you. We're still, because I was mentioning preparing, preparing the decision for you, and we'll have that for the next meeting.
Good. I think we can probably move pretty quickly through it then, because I think everyone's had their questions. So all right, I am ready for motion.
Motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of December our next planning board meeting.
December 30, 2020.
Thank you.
Second.
Member LaRue. Vice Chairman Impama.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. Is Paul Raymond on the phone still? I think maybe we lost Paul. Okay.
Can I say just one quick thing before I move on?
Of course.
As much as Scott and Mr. Buckley or Scott Weiss and and Bob said very many nice things about us and you in terms of all the things that we've been doing, I just want to make sure I recognize their involvement and the chamber's involvement in especially the MWRA grant and a lot of the other work and beside hide and scenes work that has been going in to really making that happen. They really, the the chamber really stepped up quite a bit to to make the Mass Works grant happen and get all parties involved. And, you know, they were a key player in getting this getting, making this happen and working together. And as I mentioned earlier, Melissa really adding to the team. The team's not just in town, the team's, you know, a lot of members, key players in the town, including Scott, Bob, and others that have have been here and many times at all these meetings and really made this happen. So I just wanted to recognize their efforts as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to say thank you, and I'd like that to continue, but there's a condition to that. Everyone has to stay healthy. All right?
Oh, yes. Thank you. And you this you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And try to enjoy a safe and distant holiday, I guess.
Thank you. You as well, Scott. Okay, we're going to move on to item nine in our agenda, which is minutes. We have meeting minutes to vote on for August 12th and November 5th. We will be voting on them separately in the minutes of August 12th and 1st. And is there anyone who cannot vote on August? Okay, but everyone else is. Okay, all right, then. I am looking for a meeting for the minutes to accept the minutes of the meeting from August 12th, 2020.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impama.
Yes.
Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, then we're moving on to meeting minutes for November 5th, 2020. I will not be voting on these minutes because I was not present for that meeting if there are anyone else who cannot vote on those minutes. Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2020.
Second.
Vice Chairman Impama.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay, all right. We do have a number of discussion items now on our agenda. So that's number 10. Discussion number, letter discussions, sorry, number one is the release of lots one and two for the conditional approval of covenant for building purposes at General Walker Estates definitive subdivision. These are the lots for that are up on Francis Wyman Road. Just to keep it so that everybody knows which ones we're talking about. Kristen, did you want to add something else to that?
Sure, Madam Chair. These lots are the 101 and 102, B 101 and 103 Francis Wyman Road for the release of from the covenant for building purposes only. They will still be held under the covenant until they are released for sale and you and clearly, as we get to the completion of the subdivision. There are two lots that remain under the covenant for that we have not yet released for building purposes, including lot that is for Dartmouth and six Dartmouth. Those are still held. So I believe Gareth Orsman is here as well to discuss the release. And he also can discuss the next item, which you can decide if you want to take them together and vote on them separately. Or if you want to vote on vote on them separately, that's fine as well. But we also have a extension of time to complete improvements within the subdivision, as well as a motion that is right after this. So like Gareth is here to discuss on behalf of the applicant.
I think we can discuss them together. So the second
This is kind of a practical request. As you know, we have a modified subdivision approval that this this board has granted. We don't have a written decision, but we have a positive vote for lots one and two. And we also have a minor engineering change this board has granted. We all know that's under appeal. But both I and Town Council have been working to resolve that appeal. And we feel that we will get there very soon. As a practical matter, the one piece of all of this that was left behind is there is a deadline for construction on the covenant that passed a while ago. And while everybody's been acting as though that deadline does not apply because we're approving work going forward long after the deadline is dead, we really need to formalize it, both for construction financing and and matters like that. So that's the nature of our requests. We've asked for until September 2021. We do not feel like it will take that long. However, we are in a pandemic, change of election. We really, I can't tell you. I've been busier these last six months dealing with problems and projects that have grown out of these situations. So we can't tell what's going to happen. But we built in a little extra time, so we don't have to come back for the board, and hopefully we'll be done before then. Happy to take questions after that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Comment to make. As I mentioned previously to the board, one of the key points that I think we've been really making, and I know, Madam Chair, you you support this statement as well, is to make sure that there's been a long time that since there's really been action in construction activity moving toward resolving the matters that existed, as well as just coming in and finishing the subdivision. The whole neighborhood is not just this applicant, but there's two other developers in the area that are building two other houses. So really, I think one of the priorities of the board has been to resolve all these matters so we can continue construction and get this project completed as it should be completed. So the one thing I had mentioned to Gareth was to make sure just if you had questions to just relay from the the applicant's side that, you know, they really are here and committed to can can completing the subdivision, completing these two houses of 101 and 103, hopefully moving forward very quickly with the next two after that. But just that, but I do agree, we do need to extend the time to complete, you know, without financing, not much happens. As much as we all wish we had money trees in our backyard, we don't. But it is critical to extend the the extension of time, and we believe it's a reasonable request and timeline to extend to the 20, September 2021. So so we don't have concerns. If, you know, so long as we can really get focused back in construction and getting this this done and resolved is is really, I think, the priority that I've heard from this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. I'm not going to go through the whole list of everybody on the board, because this, these are discussion items. I'm just going to ask if there's anyone who has any questions or comments that they want to make, they can just chime in. No one? All right. Maybe we're going to get out of here before nine. All right, then I I think we do have a couple of motions. We need to vote on these matters. So I'm looking for a motion on the first item, the release of lots.
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. I'd like to make a motion to the Planning Board hereby release the slot one and two to General Walker Estates definitive subdivision from the conditional approval covenant for building purposes only. The conditional conditional approval covenant remains in effect for the subdivision in as it is declared until in effect the conditional, excuse me, conditional approval covenant remains in effect. I guess until the subdivision is declared complete by the Planning Board.
Second. Thank you both.
I will interrupt that that was not at all Ernie's fault. That was our fault. It just had grammatical issues with the motion.
Okay.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impama.
Yes.
Clerk Raymond. You know. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And now we have need a motion for the extension of time.
Member, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I did want to mention I failed to do it when I just was speaking. One of the, what we did add to the extension of time is we just did ask for the applicant applicant to check in with the department every three months, starting in January, just on the status of that completion getting to September 2021. So I want to come back to the board just to just a status update for the department so we could report back. Okay, and that's in the, that's the last sentence of the motion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the Planning Board hereby extends the time, make a motion for the Planning Board hereby extend the time to complete all improvements within the General Walker Estates definitive subdivision from September 2019 to September 2021. The applicant should submit every three months a report to the planning department as to the status of completion, beginning with the The applicant should submit every three months a report to the planning department as to the status of completion, beginning with the first report in January twenty twenty-one.
Second. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impama.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espa.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Okay, so the next item on our list for discussion is master plan. As you all know, I asked staff to send out the Google Doc link for everyone for us to review the master plan. Most of the elements have been reviewed, have already been reviewed and approved, except for housing and town center. But since we do have two new members since that happened, I thought it would be, make sense for everyone to just take another look. This has been a very long process, a great process, a wonderful learning process, but it's time for us to finish this up. So I've set a pretty aggressive schedule. I'm asking everyone to read all the documents and give us your feedback. Give feedback to staff so that we can discuss again on in our next December meeting. I'm sure there'll be additional discussions, but my goal is to try and get this approved by our second January meeting. So if anyone has any questions or concerns about that, let me know. But in the meantime, I think we just all have a lot of work to do to just finish this up. Anyone have any questions? Okay, all right. Moving on. Kristen, did you want to talk to us about the next item on our list, number four?
Sure. Just to let you all, if you're all aware, we just got a memo from council today. There, so if you, all of you remember, we've discussed this kind of tolling of constructive approvals and time to file decisions and a lot of the kind of actions of boards in the face of COVID. And it had been, all of that goes until forty-five days until after the state of emergency is over. And what has happened on November tenth, the governor signed into law chapter two oh one of the Acts of twenty twenty that responds to concerns about long backlogs for local proceeding and revises the tolling deadlines for land use regulatory and permitting boards as they were affected by COVID nineteen and altered by chapter fifty-three, which was passed that told everything until after the forty-five days after the termination of the state of emergency. What this does is the new law, chapter two oh one effectively ends the tolling period on December first of twenty twenty, that which means instead of having matters told until the state of emergency ends plus forty-five days, it ends two weeks from now. So there are just a, we actually are in pretty good shape and, you know, we just got this today, but kind of what our practice has been to kind of go about business as usual, to have folks sign on mass extensions of time and and other things that normally would have, you know, if things were expired or coming to their constructive approval deadlines, we worked with the applicant to mutually extend those those deadlines. So it's just important to know that most, there are a few exceptions, but for the most part, it seems like the tolling of time and constructive approvals is again something we need to be carefully watching. Again, quick look, I'm not really worried about what we have in front of us. There are cities and towns that have literally not had public hearings for six months, which is kind of bananas, that all of a sudden, the end of this memo says, well, if you haven't, December first says you have pretty much forty, you know, the the tolling clock starts again on December first. And for many things, you know, it's November nineteenth today. You don't have two weeks to advertise for December first. So anyway, it's, you know, I think there's a lot of things overlooked in terms of the timeline to, that that date seems aggressive to the, having this passed on the tenth and having it start on the first is aggressive. But anyway, we're in pretty good shape from at least the permits we have standing, but it's just something to definitely be aware of when we're thinking about timelines, deadlines to file. One of them that will affect us is the pending matter that we had early on the agenda in terms of a subdivision. The subdivision amendment does have a clock, and that clock has been extended. And I'm not sure if we're going to get too much mutual consideration to extend too much further. So I just want to make all of you aware of that if that, in fact, is the case, that will affect that particular subdivision in front of us. It will also, let's see, the other outstanding subdivision that we have, I think, is the Redmond Street subdivision that we just need to be very, very careful to make sure that we're extending timelines to on those. So subdivisions are the biggest issue because they constructively get approved if you don't act in time. So otherwise, I'm not too worried, but we really need to keep a close eye on those items, which for a while it was, you know, this is never going to end. So forty-five days after the never ending COVID situation was not something we worried about, but all of a sudden, this is coming very quick. So just wanted to make sure you guys knew that. It came in today. It was like, whoa, okay, we need to really pay attention again. So that's, yeah, anyway, that's that's that. But you should know about that.
All right, thank you, Kristen. Does anybody else on the board have any new business they want to bring forward? No? Okay, well, I have one little just fun item that I wanted to just let you all know about. The Burlington Sculpture Park, as you all know, is is installed. Everything's going forward. It's moving very, it's it's been very well received. We went before the Board of Selectmen this past Monday to get permission to install benches in the park. What we're doing, though, is we're not doing regular park benches. We actually found a sculptor who makes benches that are sort of like art that you can sit on, and it's really cool. We're going to be moving boulders that were dug up from Mary Cummings Park during their construction of the parking lot. Some big boulders were uncovered, and we're going to be moving them to the site. And the artist is actually going to be working with the boulders and some slabs of granite onsite, so people will even be able to watch his work. And we're going to also have some participation with sculpture students at the high school. So it's it's a really interesting and exciting opportunity. We're eventually going to have three, three benches, probably only one installed this year. But it's just something to watch for, something very unique and special that I think the town will enjoy. So that's all I have. Okay? All right. I guess we're ready for a motion right before nine o'clock.
Voting to adjourn.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impama.
Yeah.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member.
Yes.
Can't hear you, Liz.
Member Espa.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody. Good night. Be safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.